Okay, let's call the City of Milton Virtual Council Meeting to Order Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. At 6:01 PM. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
I'm gonna let Jenny do that. She's taking minutes tonight.
Confirmation of meeting notice at City Hall, Dave's Hardware and Piggly Wiggly. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, we have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance, which if you can find Inga Cushman Square on your Zoom screen, you'll also find the United States flag over her shoulder. And if we could all join in with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you everyone. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. So we, we have a lot of proclamations and we do have some guests. And if anyone would like to speak on any of the proclamations, we can do that now. Inga, do you have anyone that might want to speak? You can raise your hand or unmute yourself or... And I'm not pressuring anyone to speak. I just want to make sure if anyone wants to say anything, they have the opportunity.
I'm not sure. Mark, did you want to say anything about the community action proclamation?
Sure, I just want to say thank you. Well, before the proclamation is read, I just want to say thank you to all of you for recognizing National Community Action Month, the month of May, on behalf of our Community Action Agency, Community Action, Rock and Walworth Counties, and on behalf of the other roughly 1,100 community action agencies across the country. We really appreciate this recognition. We, as our agency, we love coming to Milton. I particularly love my experiences at Milton High School. Whenever I come to Milton, I'm always treated incredibly well and enjoy the partnerships that we have with organizations in the community. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you for your participation in our strategic planning. That was really helpful and we're happy to have you here tonight. So I'm gonna read the list of proclamations that I have. I'm not going to read each and every one of them because, well, I would lose my voice by the end and I probably would mess things up. But we, I am gonna sign proclamations for Clean Air Month, which is May. Community Action Month, which I'm gonna come back and read. Drinking Water Week, May 2nd to May 8th. Mental Health Awareness Month for May. National Historic Preservation Month in May. National Police Week, which will be May 9th through the 15th. Public Service Recognition Week, which is May 2nd through the 8th. National Teacher Appreciation Week, which is May 3rd through the 7th. There are other weeks and entities that we are celebrating, but they're not on the agenda. So, so I don't get in trouble. I'm going to talk about their, those things, general items. And I just want you to know that Mark S. is smiling, so he must be proud of me for that. So here we go. The ones I am gonna read. Community Action Month. Whereas, community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas, community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all American counties. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. And whereas, community action delivers innovative services and supports the, that create greater opportunities for children and families in need and to help families and children succeed. Whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas, community action is celebrating 57 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. Congratulations. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all community action agencies, especially Community Action Incorporated, serving Rock and Walworth Counties. So congratulations, Community Action. Awesome. Okay, the next one is National Police Week, which will be coming up May 9th through the 15th. Whereas, police services provided in the City of Milton play an integral part in the everyday life of community members. And whereas, the dedicated men and women who, on a daily basis, protect us, defend us, and serve as guardians are highly trained and committed to public safety. And whereas, the support, trust, and cooperation of an involved community is vital to the efficient and effective operation of community policing agencies and programs. And whereas, the health, safety, and quality of life in the community greatly depends on these programs, services, and employees providing them. And whereas, the City of Milton Police Department incorporates modern-day community policing practices, focusing on their role as guardians by proactively engaging our community to create unity, build and sustain trust, and enhance the overall safety of the City of Milton. And whereas, all members of the City of Milton Police Department recognize and take seriously their sworn duty to serve the community by safeguarding life and property, protecting all against violence and disorder, and working in partnership to enhance public safety. And whereas, we proudly honor and pay tribute to the ultimate sacrifice of past law enforcement officers throughout the country while gratefully acknowledging the daily sacrifices of our present officers. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through May 15th, 2021, as National Police Week in the City of Milton and call upon all community members to appreciate the contributions which these officers make every day to our health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you, Milton Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, now, Public Service Recognition Week, May 2nd through May 8th, 2021. This will be the last proclamation that I read, so hang in there with me. Whereas, Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes do the best work that keeps our nation working. Whereas, public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. Whereas, many public servants, including military personnel, public police officers, firefighters, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. Whereas, public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, train conductors, astronauts, nurses, safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, woo-hoo, shout out to the social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible and a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Public Service Recognition Week. And further, I encourage all community members to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Alright, I just want you to know that the sun is shining on my face and beating in. So if I start sweating, it's just because the sun is shining on my face. I am not crying yet. Alright, so. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2021-13, supporting the renewal and funding of the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Program.
Well, this is an item that is on the agenda. There's conversations at the state level about whether to renew and refund this program. This is a program that is typically used for conservation of open space and recreational space. It has been certainly utilized by the Ice Age Trail Coalition in years past. So in the Governor's 2021-2023 budget includes a 10-year reauthorization of the stewardship program. And this resolution would be asking for the state legislature to support that reauthorization of this program.
Alright. Any questions or comments? Larry?
Um, yes, I'm on the, I'm a board member of the Wisconsin Wildlife Federation. We've been a big proponent of this program to continue. A lot of the dollars are used to preserve public lands, as Al said, and green space and trails and all those kinds of things that sometimes don't get funded, you know, through the normal budget process. So this program is really helpful. So I appreciate our support of that.
Thanks, Larry. Ryan, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Teresa?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay, that, I think that's everybody. Is there a motion to approve the resol- the Resolution 2021-13, supporting the renewal and funding of the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Program?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that resolution passes. Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
I saw move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. I just want you to know, like, the agenda is so long tonight. I have a book in front of me. A book, I tell ya. Thank you, Jenny, for printing it off and keeping me on track, or at least trying to, right? I thought it might be a little helpful. Alright. 15, right? We're on 15. Discussion and possible action on Ordinance 483, restricting parking at Veterans Park during school hours.
This has come as a request from a community member. Since school is now back in session, there has been certainly an occurrence, a pretty regular occurrence, I've witnessed it myself, after receiving this request of high school students parking in the new public parking lot along Veterans Park and Orchard Row. And the thought process was, could we take a similar approach to that public parking lot that we have taken in other areas of the city around the high school and limit parking for two hours during, while school is in session? This would, you know, then prohibit somebody from parking there all day and like the, open up spaces for people who may want to use the park and enjoy the park for, you know, a more limited time. This would, by adopting this ordinance, this would allow city police to enforce the parking. Right now, it's a public parking lot. Anybody can park there for any duration, for any reason. And this would kind of, you know, open that up more for the intended purpose of that parking lot. So we're certainly in support of it. It makes sense. As I indicated, we've done it in other parts of the city. So we were, had this ordinance drafted and brought forward for your consideration.
Bill, any questions or comments?
Guess just a question of the chief in terms of how much is involved in enforcing this? Would it be a big deal or not so much?
Parking enforcement is not overwhelmingly high priority for us anyway. So we would, we would enforce violations in this lot mainly on complaint. If there's a regular person that just constantly violates. We aren't going to be stopping with stopwatches and chalking tires or anything like that to make sure that people don't overstay their welcome. But we will help where we can. I don't anticipate it's gonna dip into our staff time much.
I would think that if a ticket was issued once in a while, a message would be shared.
Yep, indeed. That's usually how it goes. Even warnings, you know, we'll do written warnings sometimes for new parking rules and even throwing some written warnings on some windshields can often deliver that message without a fine.
And Officer Schneider, the school resource officer and principal Bill Warren indicated that they would, you know, kind of make this publicly known that you're not, that if this passes, students are not parking that, in that lot. And, you know, generally, compliance is gained through, you know, kind of just that simple, hey, let's not do this kind of thing. So that's what we're hoping as well.
One of the things that we discovered today, just by happenstance, is I think the lot is being used some by the construction folks too, that are working on the high school. So we'll be doing a little communication with them as well, once the rule kicks in.
There were some really nice cars when I drove by today.
Devin, do you have any questions or comments? No. Linda?
I think that it's a great idea. I drove past the other day and there were two gentlemen sitting in the pavilion and the parking lot, and of course, all the parking around the pavilion was totally full. And I, I was just hoping that they had gotten parking themselves. And I think that, I, I think by us, I realize we can't actually enforce with chalk marks and such. But I think that, you know, I, I believe this is another step to help our youth to understand that, you know, this is a very important, this is an important park and there's, you know, there's a lot of people that, that utilize it. A lot of the older generation and... I think it's a great idea.
Thanks, Linda. Teresa?
No, I support it. I've been concerned about parking outside of school parking lots for a long time.
Brian?
I think it's a good idea. So that's it. Comments?
Larry?
My only concern is it's a public parking lot. That isn't changing by this decision, if we decide to do this. Public to me means it's accessible to a citizen. But beyond that, I just want to make sure I understand. It's when school is in session. Does that include after-school activities? Does that include weekend athletic events? All those sort of things. I'm just asking the question.
We're interpreting it as during traditional school hours. So no, it would not include after-school, evening, weekend, summer.
Okay, that's helpful.
Those are the times, I'm sorry, those are the times that, that the parking is the most congested.
Yeah.
During those other occasions when school classes are not in session, there's more parking available in the lots around the high school for those other events. So they have a tendency not to spill out into the neighborhoods like it does during a normal school day.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading, waive the second, third reading, and adopt ordinance number 2021-483.
Second.
That's impressive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I mean, we haven't done an ordinance reading in a while, so. Good idea. Alright, discussion and possible action regarding proposed changes to the Residential Exterior Improvement Program grant guidelines.
So as you'll see on the next item, the Community Development Authority reviewed all 13 of the current grant applications for the Residential Exterior Improvement Program that we've received thus far in 2021. As part of their review, there was three grant applications in particular that the CDA was in support of, but by letter of the law, I guess, if you want to say that, even though it's a little bit extreme, they would not be eligible. So in discussions with them, they felt that, you know, the language in the program guidelines could be and should be changed. And if, and if it were to be changed, then they would ask on a favorable recommendation for those three applications. The question in hand is, the program guidelines, a replacement of non-hard surface driveways such as gravel or grass, et cetera, with a hard surface material are eligible projects. But the repair of an existing hard surface driveway with a like or, or better product is not listed as an eligible program. And looking at the spirit of the program with the idea that, you know, the goal of this program is to improve the integrity of our housing stock and to help eliminate or mitigate any potential blighting influences that a property that is in disrepair may have on its surrounding neighbors and potentially stabilize its own value. And the CDA unanimously agreed that, you know, in some cases, a, a deteriorated asphalt driveway could be even worse looking than a gravel driveway. So they felt that repair of a, of a, of a damaged or disrepaired hard surface driveway should be an eligible activity as well. So that, with that change, then, that would impact three of the recommendations. The other item was more of a clarification. Under the definitions of designated area, the program applies to residential properties. They thought it was important to add the word "residentially zoned" properties as to not cause confusion between a residence versus a business. Understanding that there are residences within businesses, they felt that those requests are more, are, are better handled through the commercial facade grant program than it would be through this program. And I concur, I concur with that, that opinion. So they asked for those two changes to be made to the guidelines that would impact the 2021 grant cycle. There may likely be some other changes that they recommend, but they didn't want to have two sets of rules out there for the 2021 cycle. So they'll bring forward those changes once the grant cycle is closed in 2021. So it's probably sometime this summer or fall. But those were the two that they thought were important to address at this time.
Okay, questions or comments? Sorry?
Did you say Larry, Madam Mayor?
I did.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just wanted to ask Al, and, and you may not know the answer, and if you don't, that's fine. Was there discussion about how to address areas of the city that aren't covered by the grant, or is that in fact clear now that all residential properties are eligible?
Because the funding source for this is TIF. The only way that we would be able to make the entire community eligible is if there was a general fund allocation to this program through the budget process. There, there are a few spots of the city that aren't covered by a TIF. They're, they're small. But there are a few places that aren't covered, mostly up kind of by where you live, Larry, to be honest.
Yeah, and, and I'm not asking so much for myself, but I did have a couple neighbors ask about it, and I just wanted to make sure. So it's something that maybe we can look at. I'm not saying we have to change.
Yeah, yeah, we could. Certainly, the council could make that decision at any time if they felt that was appropriate or prudent. But it would require a funding source beyond TIF in order to fund those programs.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Ryan?
No questions or comments?
Teresa?
No, I just, well, I will want clarification of the ones that were turned down.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Um, Devin?
No questions or comments?
Linda?
Now, are we talking about the actual grant applications or?
Not yet.
Or, okay.
Just, just the guidelines.
Just the guidelines. I think that I believe we all kind of knew from the start that this would be a fluid thing that as things take place and changes happen, that there was gonna be changes made. And I think that that's, the CDA has done an incredible job with this whole program. I totally support this change.
Thanks, Linda. Bill?
No questions.
Okay, so Al, then, what would the motion be?
I would say a simple motion of approval. Make a motion to approve the changes to the Residential Exterior Improvement Program guidelines as presented by city staff.
Okay. Does every, everybody, okay, Linda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Bill, that was an "I," right? Okay. Alright, that motion carries. Okay, then. Discussion and possible action regarding Residential Exterior Improvement Grant bequests.
So as previously mentioned, so the Community Development Authority reviewed all 13 applications. They had a very robust conversation. It probably was close to a 12-hour-long meeting where they, where, where they went over every single application and talked about each one. Ultimately, they forwarded a recommendation of approval of five grants. And those are the ones listed there on St. Mary's, West Madison, 232 North John Paul, 402 Rogers, and 137 Romar. Those favorable recommendations for the five grants total in the amount of $20,819.50. They additionally approved three additional grants, which is what we just discussed. Again, understanding that guideline, those grant requests meet the program guidelines unless they were changed by the council. The council just took that action. So with that, they would be forwarding a favorable recommendation for the driveway replacement requests at 411 East Madison, 606 College, and 217 Green Hill. There were two additional requests that the CDA wanted more information on. We do have, we do have more information on the 215 Front Street. And the CDA will be meeting again tomorrow afternoon to discuss the new information. Haven't heard back yet from the 13 West Ash Lane request as to the additional information that the CDA wanted. So no action was taken on those two grand requests from the CDA. And then there was three that they recommended denial of. And those, that was 654 Rainbow Drive. In that specific grant request, the applicant was requesting for a garage door replacement. In viewing the pictures and, and visiting the property that some of the commission members did, they felt that it didn't really, you know, because these are competitive grants and there's a limited amount of dollars, they didn't feel that that request really met the spirit of the program. They didn't feel that the garage door itself was in such disrepair. It seems like the real issue is that the garage door opener is broken and the homeowner wants to replace the garage door opener and then subsequently wants to replace the garage door as well. So they just didn't feel that it met the, kind of the spirit of the program with competitive dollars. That was their opinion. The 742 East Madison Avenue window replacement. Blanking on this one, Inga, what was the status of this one?
This is Goodrich House. This is Terry Williamson's property.
This is Goodrich House. This is Terry Williamson's property. It's.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Okay. Geez, holy cow. Yeah, so this was, uh, this one was what kind of prompted that, that change to the program guidelines. Because Terry's property is zoned commercial, they felt it was more appropriate that she apply for a commercial facade grant, which she has in the past and received. And based on some quick math that I did and looking at her previous applications, she would be eligible for a commercial facade grant in the amount of sixteen hundred dollars because she hasn't, she hasn't gotten the full amount that she, she could. So they just recommended that she apply through the commercial facade grant program instead of the residential, again, being mindful of the limited dollars. And then the one oh four North John Paul one, they denied that because the applicant wanted to basically pay himself and a buddy to do the work. And by the program guidelines, that's not appropriate. You must have a contractor. They were certainly in support of his grant request and felt that it was, you know, definitely a, a legitimate grant request. And he did provide other estimates, but ultimately said that he was going to work with a friend who was going to, who he was going to pay to do the kind of the work for him. And that's just not a permissible use of the program guidelines, within the program guidelines. So they reluctantly denied that one. Hopefully, it seems weird, but if the applicant were to come back and say, okay, then I'm going to use this other contractor who was more expensive, they would support it. But, you know, it's hard, it's, it's a fine line, you know, I, if I get, if I get a quote to replace my windows for a thousand dollars and I think, you know, I can do it for eight, and then I took, you know, myself eight grand, you know, it's, it's it gets a little slippery there. So that was the rationale for the three denials.
Well, just so we have them if someone asks publicly and.
And I, and I knew that question would come up and it would have just been a long way to type all that out, so. And, and we'll reach, we have already reached out to all of them, right, Inga?
Um, I think you were going to contact Terry after you did a little bit more homework, but the other two have been contacted via email.
So they were aware that they were recommended of denial. I'll reach out to Terry tomorrow. Once, once I was able to go back and find her old applications. And we'll just process that one. It's a commercial grant, probably put it on the next agenda, so. So the recommended motion for this one would really be kind of two separate motions. I suppose you could combine it into one. Maybe just cleaner to do two, that the city administration and community development authority recommend approval of the five grants that were recommended for approval, as well as the three grant requests were conditionally approved as outlined in the memo. And then subsequently, a third, a second motion that the city administration and city, and community development authority also recommends the council deny the three grants that were recommended for denial as outlined in the memo. That makes sense?
Yeah, you make up the motions.
Let's, let's, let's take our shot at the first motion.
Unless there's other questions too. I don't want to, I don't want to jump the gun.
Linda?
Um, I'll make the motion that we approve the favorable recommendation from the CDA of the five grants totaling twenty thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents. And that would be for the first five properties. Is that how you want this motion?
And you could combine the three that were conditionally approved as well.
Okay.
You'd really be, you'd really be recommending approval of eight grants.
Okay, I'll make that motion for eight grants.
A second.
Okay, everybody good on that? So there's five that they approved and then an additional three more that they conditionally approved. And the motion is to approve those eight grants. Is there a second?
Say it.
Okay, Linda, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say again, you know, heads off, hats off to the CDA for figuring all of this stuff out because as, as we all know, that there's a lot of grants that could possibly come in. And I think it's important that we, that we back up the commission's decisions.
Okay, thanks, Linda. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Alright, that motion carries. Then the second motion is regarding denying the three grants that were recommended to be denied by the CDA. If you choose to.
I will make that motion.
Alright, and Bill Wilson seconded it. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries. Alright, hey, we're back to chickens. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance two thousand and twenty one four eight one, ordinance amending section six dash two zero two parent, parent three, keeping of chickens.
Do you want to take this one?
Me?
I said Jenny.
Oh, okay.
I don't, sure. Let me pull up my memo.
Out of the frying pan. Would it be inappropriate to say out of the frying pan and into the fire when we're talking about chickens?
Uh, a little bit, I think. Chickens aren't here, so.
It's nothing to cluck about, Al.
So for this one, as discussed at a previous council meeting, and we were having an issue where we received an objection from a neighbor after receiving notice that there was going to be a chicken permit and issued in their area. And the ordinance states that they have fourteen days from receiving that objection to put it on the city council for a hearing. So we, that, with that fourteen days, there was not a city council meeting scheduled, so it was extended. And Attorney Shoder stated that we should extend it to twenty-one days. Then that will allow us additional time to put it on an agenda. Originally, we had talked about the next council meeting, but if we get that objection on a Friday prior to a council meeting, we won't have enough time to let the people know and that this hearing is coming up. How'd they do?
Well, nobody's interrupting or making us pause and think about anything, so I think that you did great. Okay. So, any questions, Bill Wilson?
No questions. Sounds like a good idea.
Linda?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions. Good idea.
Larry?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Where's Devin? I lost Devin. Oh, there he is. Oh, your square moved. Your square moved. Somebody must have moved. Okay, is there a motion? And so this is, is this a, like, pass and not have a second and a third?
If you would like to, yep, that, that's, that's always available to you because this is an ordinance. You could make a motion to approve the first reading, waive the second and third, and adopt.
I would move, I would move approval of ordinance four eighty, or the amendment to ordinance four eighty-two amending six dash two three, no, six dash two oh two. And it's four oh, four eighty-one, excuse me. Ordinance four eighty-one amending section six dash two oh two C, keeping chickens. And to approve the first reading, waive second and third, and adopt.
Okay.
Alright, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Okay, that passes. And now we have the B ordinance. And Jenny, did you want to do this one too?
I can handle it. I can handle this one. So it's, it's the same process. The only difference is the letters that are sent out, they are within two hundred feet of the center of the property. So two hundred foot radius of the center of the property and it's the same that it's, they have fourteen days for the objection hearing or to put an objection in. And then with that hearing, they have fourteen days to put it on a council meeting. But again, we need to extend it or requesting to extend it so that we have enough time to let everyone know about it. And also to be within that twenty-one days for a city council meeting to be scheduled.
Alright, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Ryan?
No questions or comments?
Devin?
No questions or comments?
Bill?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Okay, is there a motion? Alright, I guess we'll table it.
I would, I would move approval of ordinance four eighty-two, ordinance amending section six dash two three two, safekeeping of bees. Move adoption, move and waive the reading, second and third reading, and adopt.
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Does anyone oppose? Alright, good job. Okay, moving right along. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution two twenty-one dash fourteen, authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources principal forgiven financial assistance agreement. Holy smokes. There's a lot in there.
Yep, the only people who add more words than engineers are attorneys, so.
So it came from the DNR. So it is the resolution that they require us to pass stating that we, you know, authorize the execution of the agreement for the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program Funds for the lead service land replacement program. The funding is a principal forgiveness for properties where the lead service lands are replaced and meet the criteria of our program. In total, for this year, we've been awarded five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So pretty good sum of money. So hopefully we have a lot of interest from our customers. And are able to take advantage of all of it. Whatever is not used goes back into the pot for next year for everybody to reapply.
Any questions or comments, Larry?
Well, I just think it's a great opportunity for the homeowners. We'll just have to try to promote that as best we can to get principal forgiveness. That's pretty good, so.
Brian?
No comments or questions beyond that. I also think it's a good thing, and we also do make sure we promote that pretty heavily.
Teresa?
No questions. I hope people take advantage.
Linda?
I don't have any questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions but a statement. And that is, I was happy to find out that someplace along the line between nineteen fifteen and now, we got copper. As the water department came out and checked our place.
Nice. Good to know. Alright, is there a motion? Linda?
I make a motion to approve resolution ordinance number two thousand and twenty-one dash fourteen, authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal Forgiven Financial Assistance Agreement. My motion is to waive the first and second reading.
Do I have to do that out of resolution?
Oh, I don't? Okay, good.
So that's that.
I'll make the motion.
And Teresa, did you just second it?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries. Just so you know, I actually have a shade pulled in my office. I don't know how to hear. There, alright.
You saw the light.
Oh my gosh.
Blinded by.
Yeah, totally. It took me a long time to figure out just to move to the right. So that resolution passed, that motion passed, discussion possible action related to dogs in Central Park.
Howie, did you want to take this one?
Sure. This is similar to the same problem we had at the cemetery last year. You've got dog owners that are closing the gates and running their dogs inside the outfield and infield at Central Park. And they're not cleaning up after themselves. And so we're starting to get complaints about it. Last, the, the latest one was one of the teams had to clean up, I'm just seven shovelfuls of, you know, just laying around before they could even practice. Our guys notice it when they mow the park now. Some of them are digging holes, which is not safe for an outfield, so it's, it's unfortunate, but without a sign, they'll just, you know, an ordinance and a sign that says you can't use the outfield because it's gated, so it's a nice place to just let your dogs run. There, there isn't a lot we can do without an ordinance, you know, to even get some enforcement. When the signs went up at the cemetery, it stopped happening, you know, so, so it wasn't like, you know, they saw the sign, you know, you can't do it, but, but it's just, it's just, it's this ownership problem with the dogs. And even at the dog, at the dog park, we have areas that are separated. There's three sections out there. One is a separate dry area for larger dogs, just to let them run. So there's an area to go, but Central Park inside the fence is not the area to take your dogs and especially not to clean up after them, so. So we're just asking for permission to write an ordinance similar to the cemetery where you can't have dogs inside of the fenced area at Central Park.
Oh, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Ben?
No questions.
Larry?
Um, I do have a comment or two. One is, I'm just going to encourage city residents, our community residents to, you know, not push us into a corner as a community and as a government. You know, if you're not going to take care of yourself and regulate your own behavior, then unfortunately, we end up writing ordinances and enforcing them. And there's some communities that are literally cutting way back on the accessibility to pets, to public property. So please, for goodness sakes, clean up after your animals. And dogs shouldn't be running free anyway. They're to be on a leash unless they're in the dog park in an authorized area, so. I'm just really encouraging people to not make us create more ordinances simply because they don't pick up their dog feces. I will point out, I'm in a wheelchair. I'm not a hero, but I pick up my own dog's feces if they do accidentally discharge on a public area. So if I can do it, I ensure that most people can do it. Thank you.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
Nope, no questions or comments.
Uh, yeah, and I, I do, I'm disappointed that we have to do it, but, you know, that's too bad.
Yep, Linda?
I am also very disappointed that we have to do that, and I hope that all of our dog owners, those that might be utilizing that or listening, because those fields are going to be full of kids. And they should be able to play in those fields and not have to worry about people leaving their animals' feces behind. Think about the kids.
Is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make a motion to authorize city administration to create an ordinance which would prohibit dogs from being within the fence area of the Central Park.
Second.
Bill, second. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action related to the opening of the splash pad in two thousand twenty-one.
This was a item we wanted to bring forward to the council, uh because it is, uh you you know, kind of one of those uh larger community issues. Um in twenty twenty, we did not open Milton's splash pad uh during the summer months due to the ongoing pandemic. Uh as we begin to approach kind of the summer months of twenty twenty-one, uh we were looking for a direction from the council on whether or not to open the splash pad in the summer of twenty twenty-one. A lot has changed since last summer. Um hopefully for the better, uh certainly can't predict the future, but uh under the phase two guidelines provided by the Rock County phased reopening plan, uh swimming pools and splash pads are allowed to be, are 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 allowed to be open um and have fifty percent capacity limits and strict physical distancing and protective measures and best business practices. You know, the challenge would be uh any kind of enforcement, although the Rock County guidelines are not enforceable as they are, um if we wanted to open up the splash pad and say, for example, splash pad open at fifty percent capacity, there's really no way to ever enforce that other than just hoping hoping that folks do the right thing. However, we already kind of have that situation in all of our playgrounds as well, you know, we're not out counting kids at Lamar or or, you know, North Ridge or anything like that, so it's one of those kind of uh you know, difficult spots. Did a quick survey of all of our surrounding neighbors in Rock County and they all intend to open up their aquatics facilities for twenty twenty-one. In fact, most of them ended up opening them even last year. Uh but before we made that kind of decision unilaterally as a city staff as to whether or not to open up the splash pad, uh we wanted to get the input from the council first to see if they thought that that was appropriate or if we wanted to wait. We put that to, we took this question to the Parks and Recreation Committee, and although they didn't have a quorum on that night, they did discuss it and had concerns uh about the fifty percent capacity and uh concerns about uh vaccination rates in the area. Um I, you know, well, maybe we should wait a little bit before opening it up and to see how things continue to progress. Uh they also understand this is a a tough question. So when we have tough questions, we we come to the council.
And we appreciate you doing that. Larry?
Um, I I think I'm in favor of opening the splash pad, but I would like, like you say, at least posting some appropriate notification. We recommend fifty percent capacity, we recommend, you know, social distancing whenever possible. Uh I, you know, at least warning people or encouraging people to follow those guidelines as we move forward.
Um yeah. And that's what we, we've done that at the playground, so we could do the same thing. And luckily at the splash pad, the picnic tables are already socially distanced, so.
Yeah, I think that the vaci- waiting for the vaccination rate might be a long wait. According to what I've been hearing, um there's a strong movement on the part of many people, unfortunately. I'll say that openly, uh do not get vaccinated, so um for various reasons, so that might be a long, a long haul wait to, for that to happen, so anyway, that's my two cents, thank you.
Ryan?
I think we should also open it, treat it just like we do at parks, is basically a park. And it's outdoors, it's an activity that kids can do outdoors, otherwise they might do something indoors and get together and stuff like that, so it does give another option for an exterior type of activity that it allows for better social distancing and stuff like that, so I think we should open up. Also, I will say that my kids really missed it last year.
Yeah, you're awfully close, it's a, it's a short walk.
You used to go every other day, so, but I I think it's you go to the park and stuff all the time still, and I think it makes sense to just open it up.
Thanks. Uh Devin?
I I would be in favor of opening it as well.
Teresa?
Yes, I believe it should be opened.
Bill?
I believe it should be open as well, and I think um there's also support in terms of uh low transmission rate uh outdoors. Um and uh you know, increasing uh evidence uh that uh transmission outdoors is at a very, very low level, so uh I think it makes sense.
Linda?
Um I am going to I'm going to suggest that we follow the guidelines that the committee has given us, maybe I'd like to see it open, how about if we just put it off a month? Um and I know that a lot of people missed it last year and, I mean, I missed it too, but you know, this is going to be a, it's it's going to be a different year and I, I'm not sure that we can actually compare our regular playground equipment to something where we uh have water going. Is the high school pool going to be open?
I I don't know the answer to that question, I assume so, but I don't know.
I guess I would kind of like to be interested to know that, but I don't know, I, like I said, I just feel like the committee has asked, you know, can we just postpone it? And I would be okay with doing that.
When do we usually open it, Howie? Memorial Day weekend?
Mo- Memorial Day to Labor Day was kind of the original um splash pad days to be open. Um we've been opening it depending on the weather a little earlier than Memorial Day and the deadline at the end of the year has pretty much been extended till you know, the end of September because it's just seemed like it's been warm in the fall all the time, so um it's not really going to be warm for a couple of weeks yet. And what we can do is we can start all the equipment to make sure it runs, and then it only takes, you know, that same day to start it whenever you want to. Um I think school gets out the first week of June and, you know, Memorial Day week would be almost June anyways if if you want it open, so um you don't get as much, you know, I guess, business down there until almost that week of Memorial Day anyways.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we open the um splash pad in the first week, June first of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, there is no second, so that motion um is off the table. Is there any other motion?
I I would, I would move that we open on um Friday, May twenty-eighth. Uh that would take in the Memorial Day weekend. Uh uh believe and uh so, you know, it's only a few days from Linda's, but uh would uh incorporate that holiday weekend.
Is there a second? Or Howie is wa- are you waving?
Um would it, would it be all right, like, the Thursday before if we start it, so in case some?
Abs- absolutely.
Fix it, like the twenty-seventh, that's.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll change that and say the the uh the twenty-seventh.
And I'll second that.
Okay, is everybody clear on that motion? They're going to turn the water on the twenty-seventh, make sure it works. And if it works, are you just going to leave it open then? Okay. All right, all those in favor?
I.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, we have an official splash pad season in the city of Milton.
I know what the headline in the Courier is going to be.
It's going to be council has their first June meeting at the splash pad.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Okay, discussion and possible action regarding committee appointments, we have had a few vacancies left to fill and um so we made some recommendations, is there any questions or comments regarding the recommendations for the committee appointments? Linda?
I think it's great that we have these committees filled and um I just want to thank everybody for their interest.
Yep, me too. It's nice to see some new faces and and continued involvement and support. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the recommended uh appointments to the remaining vacancies in the committee.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any questions or further comments? All those in favor?
I.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, we got those committee appointments and I'm pretty sure by tomorrow there will be another vacancy or they're already. Right?
We, we were just notified today that there's a vacancy on Historic Preservation Commission now, so if anyone is interested or knows anyone that's interested, let Mayor Nisa Welch know so she can make the appointment. Jenny, there's still two vacancies on ZBA or just one, just one, right?
I just wanted this time. All right, moving right along, we're getting them filled, we are, okay, general items, I have a general item. It is um in addition to all of those proclamations and, you know, you'll be asked to name them in team building, no. It is uh municipal clerks week or month, is it month, Jenny, what is it? Is it, are we celebrating you all month long? Uh I believe it's Clerks Week, I think it's just a week. I don't know, here it is.
Yeah, it's on the municipality.
It's week, yeah. Yes, it's just a week.
You'd think clerks would get minutes.
Yeah, we'll say one minute, I like that better.
I'll second that.
Uh it is also small business week, so get out there and uh visit some of our small businesses in the city of Milton. And it's also uh nurse appreciation week, I'm sure there's like twenty-five other things, but we're trying to hit the most important ones. So, thank you, everyone, um in those positions and all of our small businesses, so that's all I have for now for general items, does anybody else have general items? Linda?
I would also just like to thank everyone for all of your support with the food truck rally. And um I will leave that to Ashley to talk about.
Yeah, we've had a very, very successful food truck rally, I kind of asked for better weather for it. Um I would say it's probably our busiest food truck rally event we've had so far. Um I know a lot of the trucks sold out of food and we had good comments about it being scattered around the east side of town. Um but I am busy planning for August twenty-ninth event right now, so thank you for everybody who come, who came out to eat some food. And the library raised over a thousand dollars with that event, so.
Awesome. Any other general items? Staff reports, we'll just go right back to Ashley, is there anything you want to add to your report?
Sure, um we have a book it to the parks program going on through the whole month of May. Just encouraging community members to visit all of Milton's parks. Um we have like a challenge tracker available for pickup at the library, so you can go to six out of the ten parks and be entered in for a prize basket, and at each of the parks, we have a QR posted somewhere that when scanned, it takes to a video of a library staff member reading a picture book. I think some of them blew away with Saturday's winds, so I have to go back out and put them back up. Um but that's going on right now, and the library will be at the farmer's market on Thursday.
Fighting stuff. Um Inga, staff report.
I'm just letting everyone know that the Fourth of July Parade registration forms, those are available on the website for anyone interested in participating to fill out. Those are due on June eighteenth by noon. And uh SIFMAC, Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, they had, they're our liability insurance company and they provide a variety of of training opportunities for our employees and our council as well. And they are migrating to a different platform for their learning management system. And it's called Learn and it's through NeoGov, which is the software company that we use for our applicant tracking and onboarding processes as well. So I'm going through the admin training right now, but council members and staff likely received emails this past week um for to activate their accounts on Learn, so if you have any questions on that, let me know, it was legitimate email. Um but I'll be getting more information out to employees at a later date.
Okay, is there any committee reports? Because I kind of went from general to staff, so maybe we should go back to committee. Okay, right, back to staff, Dan?
I don't have anything exciting, we're just chugging along, getting finishing up the stuff from last year, waiting for the audit entries and just doing our normal stuff each week.
Howie? Thanks, Dan.
There. Uh well, by next council meeting, we should have all of our new staff will be working, so that'd be three new people. Um otherwise, we're just working on the, working with Mark on the capital improvement program. And, you know, just some of the DNR requirements and stuff that we have to change. Next council meeting is the assessment hearing, so for Cottonwood and for Blanche Drive. And otherwise, it's just, just getting things ready for summer. Yeah, um let's see, um working on the cemetery for Mother's Day, so it looks nice. And otherwise, um that's, you know, that's just most of what's going on, just a lot of regular stuff. Brush week is all this week too, for brush collection, so.
Mark E. Mark E Langer.
I don't have a lot, um disinfection season started the treatment plant. Um we did receive bids um for the ceiling project, so that'll be on the next council agenda. Um it's really kind of about it, I guess, working on the lead service line program and other miscellaneous stuff, so.
Okay, Chief?
I'm going to talk a little bit, um so uh thank you for your proclamations tonight. Uh the police week proclamation proclamation is always important, um but have it also aligned with Mental Health Awareness Month is crucial for us. Uh often during this week, we, we recognize the folks who are lost in the line of duty. And in twenty nineteen, more police officers in the United States died by suicide than they did by line of duty deaths. So those are both things that we need to be aware of, there, it's a topic that we're familiar with here in the city of Milton. Um we, next Tuesday night at six PM at the courthouse is our Rock County Law Enforcement Memorial Ceremony where we honor all of our officers in the county who have died in the line of duty. And as of two years ago, we are also including John Conger in that remembrance, so um as a police chief and a nearly three-decade police officer and a counselor in grad school, um that's going to try to help people after I'm done with this career, I appreciate the attention that we spend on that because it's important and to show support for the people doing this line of work. It's a noble profession, which segues into the next thing, that we are really looking for that next guardian to join us, um our application process has been um discouraging, I guess, it's a difficult hiring environment right now, folks um are are really weighing whether or not to start this career, uh but I want to encourage people to consider it. It's, it's, it's tough out there, but it's also rewarding and and a noble profession. And so folks who are interested in joining us, I encourage you to look at our application process, uh we'll be having applications open and um for submission until May sixteenth. And we're hoping we find our next awesome employee through that process, that's all I got.
Thank you, Chief. And who else? Are we, is it Al, is that it? Jenny, do you have anything else?
I do not, but I want to thank you for.
I do not, but I want to thank you for bringing up the municipal clerks week. I appreciate it. Um, so that's all that I have. Thanks. Al?
Uh, on the Plan Commission agenda, you know, this kind of slid by, but on the Plan Commission agenda and under the consent agenda on the site, this evening's meeting, was the approval of a one-lot CSM along Putman Parkway, and that is the Clausen Quality Chocolate slot. So it's exciting to see that start to move forward. That's the first step of their process in, uh, bringing forth their site plan, which they hope maybe we might be able to get to see it yet i- in May of the, uh, of this year. So it's exciting to see that move forward. You know, I I continually get questions from folks about what's going on with that, what's going on with that project. Why haven't I heard anything? It's a hundred and sixty-nine acres and a, and a really big building, so it'll take some time. But, uh, you know, not everybody can move as fast as Carl. I don't know if anybody's driven out there, uh, to see his project. Yeah, he's moving really quick. So again, a lot of good stuff going on. Uh, twenty-twenty-one is shaping up to be a a pretty exciting year. Still have a lot of regular conversations about residential development. I certainly believe we'll see at least one plat, yeah, this, this year. So, yeah, things are, things are moving along well. You know, we could just get, uh, things to kind of stabilize in the, uh, in the pandemic world and get some prices of materials to go down. I think things would even be fa- going faster. We can't control those.
And we can't. All right, team building exercise. It is very fitting since we are celebrating parks in different ways in the city of Milton and through resolutions and local and state national investments. So this is super easy, super easy, not tough at all. You have a, a choice here. You can name your favorite national park, state park, county park, or local park or trail. Or you can share with us all of your favorites in those categories.
I'll name my favorite county. Um, that's Magnolia Bluff. Uh, we love going up there.
Nice. Thank you, Bill.
Bill stole mine. That's a beautiful place.
That's all you're saying, Devin? No, no, you don't just get to be like, oh, he stole mine. So do you have a, a favorite national park, even if you haven't been there or state park or?
We, I grew up, uh, camping at, um, Lake Egonza State Park, out of outside Stoughton, so, um, that would probably be my second favorite.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for doing that, Devin. Teresa?
Devil's Lake.
And nobody can say that Teresa stole it, right? Everybody loved that, right?
Yeah.
Larry?
Uh, Yellowstone. And then, uh, I would say High Cliff State Park and also I do like, uh, Kettle Marine, Southern Kettle Marine Park. I like their landscape. And I love all our parks here in the city, so.
Yep, Ryan?
Yeah, two. I'm gonna go with, uh, local one and a, not local one, local one. I like the Arboretum in Janesville. Nice place to hike with kids. And then the more obvious one probably for me is Gaysburg National Military Park.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm going because I don't want anybody to take mine. I love the Ice Age Trail. I love, love it for local. And then, um, Yellowstone would be my favorite national park.
I would say Miller Park, but that doesn't exist anymore. So, uh, one that's really close to us here that, uh, we went to last year and we're just blown away by it and and are excited to go back uh, is Paradise Springs Park. Uh, it's right over by Eagle. Uh, not, you know, it's a thirty-minute drive from here. It it is amazing. It's just an amazing little hideaway. Um, right here, right, right, right close to us, so. And if you were to ask my kids, they would say the Yellow Park, the Orange Park, or the Purple Park, because they name all the parks in the city of Milton based on the color of the slides.
Oh, that is so cool.
Yeah.
I, um, for a national park, uh, Great Smoky Mountains National Park is a favorite of ours. We try to go there whenever we can. And for a state park, I am going to pick the state of Iowa, uh, Pike's Peak State Park. Outside of McGregor, Iowa, just across from Prairie de Sheen is a favorite spot of ours too. Lots of wonderful features and good hiking.
I had no idea there was more than one Pike's Peak.
Yeah.
That is the other Pike's Peak. It's certainly not as big as the original, but yeah, it's a beautiful place.
I had no idea that there was a park in Iowa.
Yeah, really? Is it in the middle of a cornfield?
No, it's actually on a beautiful bluff, um, that you can, you can see the convergence of the Wisconsin and the Mississippi River. And yeah, it's pretty amazing.
That would be cool.
Also Indian mound territory up there too.
Yeah, there's another wonderful park nearby there with, I don't know how many mounds that you can hike around and learn about. That's pretty amazing.
Wow. Nice.
Well, everybody has taken all of mine. Um, the Ice Age Trail is like one of my favorites, but Smoky Mountains, um, I have to say that's my favorite national park. But I see, I like all kinds of parks and trails, so, you know, just point me in a direction and and I would enjoy it.
So you're not gonna like name a local Milton one that you gather prairie seeds on all the time?
Well, I, I do love Cross Ridge Park. It is a really cool park and we have a really cool trail. But then, I mean, north and south, Goodrich, Lamar, I mean, uh, we, we have a lot of good parks.
I'm gonna say Devil's Lake. Um, there's this, I love going there and there's this one rock that's a perfect reading spot to look over the lake. So I look forward to going there again this year sometime.
And and any other parks, Ashley? Like, I can't like harass Devin and then let you get away with just.
Well, I don't leave Wisconsin a lot, so for Milton parks, I like, I went to school at West and I loved playing at the park at West. I have many memories of playing over there.
And and what color slide do they have, Al, at West?
Is the Purple Park.
Okay, okay.
But it did have that really cool tall slide for a very long time.
Yes, they did. They finally took it down.
All right, I will go. Unfortunately, I don't know many Milton parks. I haven't been into many of them. Uh, but I am gonna say Mir Lake State Park. I love the rock formations up there. Uh, so I love hiking in that one and the boating is really good. Uh, so then for one that is not in Wisconsin, it's the Four Mile Ecological Preserve Park in Cape Coral, Florida, with all of the mangroves. So those are my two. Nice, very nice.
Any of our guests gonna join in?
This is about the time the courier flees. Oh. Can't believe that Linda didn't know that.
Really? Well.
The twentieth anniversary of Cross Ridge Park in Milton was the courier's response to, um, their, the comment about fleeing. They must want an interview from Al after the meeting. They're just, they're really hanging on. I'm, I'm so proud of them.
Yeah. I didn't know that. It's been there twenty years. Wow.
Yeah, just about, almost as, well.
Nice.
Almost as long as I've lived here.
Yeah.
Also, um, in the comments, Carrie Born mentioned Yellowstone, that that is a life-changing experience for UW whitewater students or Wisconsin. I'm not sure. I think UW is whitewater, right?
Yes.
I should know. I graduated from there. I should know. I should know things. Mark S. Now, I, I have to point this out. This is like the second time in a row that you have not been last and you're really changing the vibe here.
Well, first, I'd like to comment. I was very, very interested to hear that the mayor was moving to the right.
I'm not staying. I'm not staying.
As far as my, uh, favorite.
Out of, out of the sun and over to the dark side.
So true. Thank you for pointing that out, yeah.
My, well, my favorite state park would be Wild losing State Park. So that would be, that'd be my favorite park.
Is a great, great park.
Thank you, thank you.
I, I, I think we all missed the Star Wars reference from Bill Wilson on May the fourth.
Maybe May, May the fourth be with you.
Star Wars Day.
Yes, yes. I don't know that my kids were born then.
And Dan expressed to me that he was really hoping team building wouldn't be around Star Wars today because it's made his day, so. Made his day at least.
I'm gonna toss in another park that maybe none of you have heard of. In New York State, in central New York State, there's a park called Lechworth State Park, uh, that's known as the Grand Canyon of the East. Uh, and it really is a, uh, it doesn't look much like the Grand Canyon, although it's got gorges and waterfalls, you know, and, uh, things like that. Uh, but it, it really is a gorgeous park and it's one that, uh, I've got a lot of memories of as a, a, a young male.
Interesting. You know, I do keep a running list, so I know who has not gone yet.
Well, I haven't gone. My kids really like Water Tower Park and we call it Water Tower Park because it's by the water tower and that's the name of it. But we also like the Red Park, which is Tower Hill Park, and I think the Orange Park, which is Cross Ridge Park. Um, for me, I remember growing up back in Verroqua. We would, um, have school trips to, I think it's Eagles Park. And they have a nice crick right there and we'd play in that. And I think it was Mr. Quackenbush. He brought his horses down and we go on hay rides around the park and it was just a fun experience to have our school picnics out there.
That's very cool.
I'll go with Niagara Falls National Park, although the Canadian side's better.
Add everything just about.
And then, uh, it's not really a park, but it's a really cool place to visit down on Sanibel Island is J N Deng Darling Wildlife Refuge.
I second that. It's amazing. And you can see alligators too.
Yep.
I, I don't have a favorite park. I can't pick one. I mean, I don't know. I, I just don't have one that's so much better than all the other ones, I guess. But I had to pick, the parks in Alaska are really nice. Um, anything up in Douglas County around with all the waterfalls are nice. And Minnesota, I haven't been there for a long time, but the Como Park in St. Paul is really nice.
Yes, that is too. I agree with that.
For Milton, probably Splash Park because that's where the grandkids like to go the most, so.
I thought it was the outfield at Central Park.
Well, you know.
It used to be a nice park. It's coming back. It's coming back. So, um, I think we're down to one. One, one holdout here that, that's, that loves to do team building, that's either blurting out the first answer or hanging in for the last.
Um, national, I like, uh, the San Juan Island Wildlife Refuge in Washington State. State, I like Pearl State Park, just the views are pretty cool from up on the blossoming out over the countryside and, uh, Beckman Mill's pretty cool here in Rock County.
Thank you very much. And those weren't even repeats, so good on you.
Very nice team building tonight. And Nisa, it's so nice for people to to share all these beautiful places that we have all been to.
It was, and I, and the courier is still here. Courier's still here. Anybody else like to contribute to team building before we, um, move on to item number twenty-five?
They have to unmute first, though.
And maybe they're purposely not unmuting. Sherry?
Hi. Um, I like Blue Mound and Governor Dodge. And I used to live in Ontario. I like Wildcat Mountain. And, um, for my national, I loved it in Mount Rainier. We lived in Washington for three years, so.
And Sherry will be running for city council next time after she's done with committee appointment because she did so well on team building. It's a prerequisite now. Next time we have city council races, we're gonna have to have the, uh, chamber do a little team building with them to screen, screen people in and out, right? Thanks, Sherry. We appreciate it. All right. All right, so this Thursday is what? Farmer's Market? First Farmer's Market? Our chief looks surprised. He's not, he's not. And I heard, I heard they have a lot, a lot of vendors, like more than they originally thought. So that's kind of exciting. And there's gonna be food trucks again for all of our food truck lovers. And our next meeting is May eighteenth. And that'll be exciting too. We'll have maybe a couple of meetings before that for different committees. And I don't have anything else. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Be, before we adjourn, Mayor, could you share with the public the location of the farmer's market and what time it opens, in case somebody's listening in?
Um, it is at, is it at the Milton East?
I believe so.
Parking lot? And I'm not sure. Is it five-thirty that it starts? It's four. It's four.
This one, this one's four-thirty. The one's a follower for.
I see.
Okay, so I'm not even close, not even close with the time.
I didn't.
Don't even know. So this one is four-thirty till?
Eight.
Till eight. And will they always go till eight? Okay, all right. So party in the park, four-thirty by Miltonese Elementary School. Awesome. I can't wait to go. And you know, you could maybe pick up a Mother's Day gift or something there for those of us that have mothers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.